Order for the May 2nd, 2022, we give a hold at 6:38. I could have the council members turn their cameras on. I will turn the cameras on or just. Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for May 2nd, 2022 is a hybrid meeting with some members attending in person and some attending virtually. Meeting was also being lodged through. If any technical difficulties experienced such as a member losing connection, meeting will be paused for now. And for tonight's meeting, I also wanted to just announce the regrets when it comes to terms and what. All order and the next item is the adoption of the agenda. You know, the agenda before us one item. Any changes to our. Positions, say none, but we get a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Booder, seconded by Counselor Townsend. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion is carried. Are there any disclosure, peculiar interest or the general nature thereof for tonight's meeting? Say none. We had no closed session, so we'll move straight to the staff report. Proposed community improvement plans and the director is here. You depending on presenting this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, so actually our manager of development services will present, but I'm going to share my screen so we can show you the presentation. Okay.
Through through you, your worship, good evening, members of council. We're going to give you a brief presentation that's based on the staff report that was sent out with the agenda. This is on our two proposed community improvement plans. Next slide, please. So just a little bit of context on why why we're bringing this forward. Basically, in the last 20 years, industrial assessment as a proportion of overall tax base has declined significantly from nine percent in 2000, only two percent in 2019. In our township, we have zoned ready industrial properties, either fully, partially, or non-service properties, and they're both publicly and privately owned. In these, in this market today, municipalities must have both location and financial incentives to compete and attract industrial investment to be successful. However, there are some legislative restrictions in terms of what can be done. Specifically, the municipal act prohibits things called bonusing, which some of you may be familiar with. And that is to give or lend any property of the municipality, including money. Leasing or selling any property for less than fair market value, it's also a no-no. Giving a total or partial exemption from any levy, charge, or fee. So these are restrictions that are in place for us. However, one avenue that is permitted to encourage the development of industrial uses is the development of what's called tax incremental equivalent grants. This provides relief from the township portion of the total property tax levy for the first few years of operation. Other incentives are grants to assist in conducting environmental studies, to assist with application fees and tax assistance during the redevelopment. Next slide, please. So what are community improvement plans? Well, they're created under section 28 of the Planning Act, and they're designed to attract or retain industrial businesses and to encourage investment or reinvestment at greenfields or existing sites. Their objectives are straightforward to increase employment, to enhance property assessment and economic activity, to encourage land sales, and to take advantage of existing private and public infrastructure that's in place. Another reason this is coming forward now is because with our new official plan being approved by the county last month with no appeals, I might add. This allows, they have policies in there that allow us to create these community improvement plans townshipwide. Prior to that, we only had one community improvement plan, and that was targeted in to Bath exclusively. Next slide, please. The first plan is the industrial community improvement plan, and the purpose of that plan is to provide an opportunity to develop and redevelop industrial zone properties to the use of the TIG. And this reduces the initial cost barrier with that industry experiences when getting established with all the significant upfront costs that they have to invest prior to production and before their cash flow begins. So that's the first plan. We've developed a set, some some set criteria that are based on best practices in the industry. And this is to make sure that these applications are of mutual benefit, both to the township and the potential investor. So these are the criteria, the applicant would have to enter into an agreement with loyalist township. Site or construction works completed prior to this agreement would not be eligible. Estimated cost for development results in an increased assessed property value for us. And then construction value has to actually exceed half a million dollars. The new business would net at least 10 new full-time jobs, and the total amount of the grant is not to exceed 50% of the cost of total improvement. This is sort of in a in a snapshot what the the TIG looks like. So the applicant would have to remit the full amount of property taxes that are due. However, the township would grant back a declining percentage of the township's portion of the total taxes paid. And in year one, that would be 100% of the value of the tax increment. Year two, 75% of the value, three, 50%, and four, 25%. This is rather standard if you look across the province at other CIPs that are in place, they're sort of broken out this way. At the end of year four, the applicant would no longer receive the tax increment grants. Next slide, please. So the second CIP is one dealing with brownfields. Now, brownfields, for those of you who may not know, are undeveloped or previously developed properties that may be contaminated. They're usually, but not exclusively, former industrial commercial properties that may be underutilized, derelict or vacant. They're unattractive for redevelopment due to the potential of soil contamination, and often it's at an unknown scale, so the risk is quite high for investors and for lenders. Costs involved in the assessment and rehabilitation of the site have to meet current environmental requirements, and they can be quite onus. And next slide. So the Brownfield CIP program actually has four potential grant opportunities in it. First is the environmental study grant that would cover eligible environmental studies to investigate the extent of contamination or potential remediation costs. There's a brownfields fees grant, BFG, that's partial relief as 50% from fees associated with planning applications, a demolition permit or building permit. A brownfield tax assistance after phase two ESA is completed, but before a building permit is issued, this would offset property tax to assist in remediation costs while redevelopment is occurring. And then finally, the brownfields tax incremental equivalent grant. It's a four-year incrementally reduced property tax, similar to the one in the other program after redevelopment has occurred, and there is a documented increase in property assessment. A budget would have to be allocated by council annually in order to offer these grants. Just as the last CIP, this one, we've come up with some eligibility criteria. The applicant again would have to enter an agreement with the township, industrial, commercial, industrial, institutional, and multi-residential properties would be eligible. Applications processed and approved on a first come, first served basis to the allocated budget that is set for this. The stacking of grants is allowed under this program, but but not to pay for the same eligible costs, and total grants cannot exceed the approved eligible costs. Work completed prior to them entering into an agreement with the township would not be eligible, just as the other program. Estimated cost for development results in an increased assessed property value that would have to be determined. And finally, remediation or cleanup costs must exceed $50,000 to be eligible for those two programs that were talked about earlier. And now I will turn it over to MJ to give you sort of a rundown of how these scenarios could look like from a finance perspective. So over to you, MJ.
Okay, so this table was similar to the one in the report. However, I have to say that the grant values have been adjusted slightly in these examples as compared to the one in the report. As we were putting the presentation together, we were aware that the the 2% annual tax increase was applied in year one, and it really should be starting in year two. So regardless of these figures, though, they're meant to give a general idea of the level of grants that would be available. So the grant, as Boden mentioned, only applies on the property assessment increase. So using the pre-build and post-build impact assessments to determine the value of the grant. And we've selected increased values based on more recent developments as well as level of investment that could be possible on larger properties in a tailer kit industrial park. So the way to look at this is if the increased property assessment value is, let's say, $20 million. The total annual tax based on 2021 rate, the total annual tax to be paid is $897,000. The township portion of that is $435,000. So in year one, the applicant would have to pay their full taxes. In year one, the township would grant back $383,000, and then you see the values for year two, year three, and year four. So they're decreasing 100%, 75, 50, and 25. So total grant issued over four years with total $970,000. So similarly, we wanted to show, you know, on 100, $100 million investment or increased in assessment value. As you can see, the total annual taxes, 4.5 million, the township portion is 2.2. So the difference, the increase on the increased value, the year one, we would grant back 2.1 million to the applicant, and then it just goes in decreasing order. But over four years, that would mean a total grant of 5.3 million. So similarly, with the 500, 500 million in increased assessed value over four years, the grant would mean 27.4 million. And for an increased value of 750 million, the total grant would be $41.3 million. I know it's a lot of. This one is a progressive scale is another option council could consider to minimize the financial impact of larger investments. So the progressive scale can be explained as such. The grant for the year is a composite of 100% taxes calculated on the first 50 million, 75% on the 50, the 100 million slice, 50% on the 100 to 200 million slice, and 25% for the balance over 200 million. The total, the total is granted back at 100%, so the composite is granted back at 100% for year one, 75% for year two, 50% for year three, and 25% for year four. So we thought we'd put a comparison together in the table here. Again, this is for in 2020, and I should have said that on the previous table, but we're using the 2021 large industrial tax rate. Because when we wrote the report, that's the tax rate that was approved at the time. 2% annual increase from year two moving forward. And this example shows you the increased land value of $500 million. So if you're not using a progressive scale, we would effectively grant back 27.4 million. Using the progressive scale again, the 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 total grant after four years would be 11.7 million. So we wanted to show the impact of either options. I mean, at the end of the day, right now, with the land being lands being vacant, you know, we're collecting property taxes at the at the vacant land rate. So this would defer the collection of full taxes. Well, you're collecting the full taxes, but you're granting back an amount, but that would defer the benefit of having full taxation over four years. But after year five, then you, we would be collecting 100% of the taxes and not granting back any. Okay, so. Net recommendations and next step. So depending on discussion and level of change required to the proposed program that the committee has in front of them at the moment, we will make the changes, and we need to prepare a notice of public meeting for the earliest possible meeting following a 20-day notice period. A by, and that's because a bylaw is needed to designate the whole township as being the area these CIPs can apply to. So to give council an idea of how attractive some of our industrial properties are at the moment, we are taking a third group of potential investors in the last, we've had like three in the last three, two months to see the township, one of the township property, and all I've asked if the municipality offers incentives, and it's because it's quite common throughout the province. So as Boden mentioned before, these policies were not possible before the appeal period for the official plan expired. So here we are. So the recommendations tonight. So we're asking the committee to consider the proposed industrial and brownfields CIPs. And we're, you know, requesting or yes, we're requesting for endorsement of the policies or the programs, or we could take further direction for revisions to the proposed programs. And with that, I will, if there's any questions, we would be happy to answer any questions. Think I need to stop sharing my screen.
Make your presentation. So we are in the middle of all, so we're a little more relaxed for some discussion. So I'll just ask, are there any questions from council members? That staff could help explain for us? Actually, I'll start with one quick question then. If I'm reading the recommendation correctly, it's for the progressive scale and sorry, for the TIG scale and not the progressive, is that correct? And I'm assuming that that would then be sort of the standard scale that's used when you were looking at other communities and preparing progression?
Yes, so definitely the one, the non-progressive, so the the one that we're posing does not have a progressive scale. It's just when we started to look at the level of grant to provide over four years. As you're, for a large industrial property, you're talking about a fairly significant increase in assessment value, so we wanted to provide council with a second option. You know, to reduce the amount of grant if if that is something that that you would want to look at.
And just to follow up with me. All of that would be increased tax value, so it would be, it wouldn't be a budget item, it would be just delayed all income from the tax base, right? Even when we were giving back the 75%, we still be getting an extra 25% that we didn't give before the call.
Yes, absolutely. So both the industrial tax incremental equivalent, so the industrial TIG and the brownfields TIG, the applicant does have to remit the full taxes owing on the property, and then the township, the township would grant them back 100% the first year, 75% the second year. So on year two, yes, you, the township would retain 25% of the taxes, and then 50% in year three, and then 25% in year four. The only ones that, the only programs that we would need to get a budget for is the environmental study grant, the brownfield fee grant, and the the brownfield tax assistance. And the reason is, basically, we're given a grant back to cover for an environmental study, so we're giving 50% back, so that that is not really linked to taxes, so we need to budget for that amount. So in, for example, if, you know, in the first few years, council chooses to maybe just focus on the industrial TIG, and then a budget would not be set for that year. And so we wouldn't have to offer a grant, so that's why the brownfields grant is based on first come, first served basis.
I'll just open it back up to the council again. Any more, Counselor Townsend?
Yes. My thanks to both the presenters. My question is actually about the the Brownfield. The idea I like, obviously, I'm a little bit biased, but I like, I like the, obviously, the obvious references to, you know, the township's climate action plan in there. And so my question is with respect to the incentives, am I to understand that the extent to which the township can sort of have some say or 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 control in how those sites are redeveloped to ensure that they do comply with those other strategic goals, that that would be, that would be covered in the the criteria that stipulates the need to enter into an agreement with the township?
Uh, yes, and I see Boden, there's also, I see Boden saying yes, and the reason is, when you're doing a redevelopment, it would have to be done as per the zoning. So in most cases, if it's a brownfields redevelopment, there would need to be some sort of planning application, especially if the zoning changes. Yeah, so definitely, and that's when council, you know, can always choose to approve or not approve certain applications. But yes, to, for your original question, each of these, although the policies would be approved or would be in place, every single one of them have to be negotiated through an agreement, and then we would put conditions in place.
I would just add, even if it didn't have to be rezoned, we have some of those cases where they're all zoned and ready to go. There's still a site plan application which would, we would impose conditions on like we do for for all site plans.
I'll just open it up to the council if they've got any questions or comments regarding this proposal.
Think it's a great idea. I agree, it's Counselor Townend. Granted, word where it is and great work by the staff. I think they've inclusively done a fantastic job. It was a good read of 70-some pages, but now they did, they did, no, hey, you got to put the details in. That was great. Good to see, and it was well written. No other comments other than that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? For discussion? And I'll go ahead and just make my comment then. I agree with Counselor Booder again with Counselor Townsend. I'm very glad to see this come forward. We see development in other areas, and we hear of incentives similar to these. And in some cases, and that may have been like, you know, the final straw, really go to another location. So I, this, I believe this keeps us competitive without really impacting the tax base negatively, because all we're doing is delaying our incomes slightly. But in the end game, we still have development, we'll have industry, we'll have jobs, and we'll have a tax base. And all of those are wins for the township, I believe. And when it comes to the brownfields, getting them rehabilitated, getting the contaminants out of the area, and is a bonus in itself, and then to have it developed into a new industry, and again, provide all those benefits. I mean, that's, that's, that's a huge win for the township, I believe. So I'm really glad to see these come forward, and I'm glad I'd like to thank staff for all the work that went into them. It was 70-some pages. It took me two full reads to make sure I got it all. Because the second time, I still, some of the light bulbs still kept coming on as I was reading it the second time, so that's really good. So I appreciate the fact that this has come forward, and I see it as a, as a great tool for the township moving forward. So having said that long spiel, I'll turn back to council if there's any final questions or comments, or there are, there is a recommendation here, there's part one or part two. If we have further direction, then we could go with part two, otherwise, part one is just proceeding with what I presented. And I'll open it up to the floor. Counselor Townsend, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move to receive the report and document regulation number one. Question one, so move. Do we have a second or? Counselor Booder? Any comments? Only to echo those of yourself, Mr. Chair. You know, obviously, the programs like this keep us, keep us competitive, as the director mentioned. You know, recent, you know, recent interest in our lands, you know, these are kind of standard, these incentives, but you know, I think that, you know, staff have taken an approach to these which which doesn't compromise our other strategic goals, such as our climate goals and our environmental goals, which obviously I stress are important to me as they are to our residents. You know, there have been times, you know, in the past where, you know, the guiding philosophy behind incentivizing industrial development has been that any development is good development. And, you know, staff have definitely taken the approach that smart development and development is consistent with our long-term strategic goals.
that, that smart development and development that's consistent with our long-term strategic goals is what we want. And that these, these incentives are geared towards attracting that kind of development without compromising those goals. So I think this is really good that, that this is coming forward, and I look forward to the comments in the public, public meeting that takes place.
Thank you. Second, any further comments? Anyone else? I just have one final question, actually, just, and it's more unprocedural. There's the 20-day period. Does that start after, does that start any, once it's received here tonight? Or does that start after it's received, have an official council meeting?
That 20-day kicks in as soon as we send out a notice. So your resolution here. I'll have to double-check if it has to be confirmed at the next council meeting. It would start as soon as the notice goes out that we intend to do this.
Okay, thank you. So, and I believe that there's no other comments. I've already pretty much said my piece, but again, thank you very much for bringing this forward. And helping us proceed down this path. So back to the ruler, any final, no final comments? I'll call the question. All in favor of motion? Motion is passed. Thank you. So that is the only item on our agenda for tonight. So the last thing is adjournment. We have a motion for adjournment. Councillor Booder? Second by councillor Gordon. Assuming no comments or questions, so I will call the question. All in favor of adjournment? It is passed. Thank you. We are adjourned, and we'll see you at the next council meeting.